Good here for our attendees and for petitioners who are in the audience. Welcome to the 1,159th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience tonight that on petitions, on tonight's agenda which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council. And the city council after holding their own public hearing will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary plaits and/or vacating petitions. Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the city council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. For petitions requesting a waiver of use or a site plan, if it's denied tonight, the petition will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to city council. All resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the commission may or may not use depending on the outcomes of the proceedings tonight. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Smiley. This is McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Present.
Mr. Ventura. Pete.
You.
Oh, you.
Oh, I'm sorry, present.
Karen Mayos, President, Chairman, will show.
Is here and Mr. Bongero is absent tonight.
Gotcha.
Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina, Stephanie Reese, Deb Walter, Scott Miller, all from our planning department. And also our Livonia television staff is here with us as well, making sure our broadcast is making it on the air. Again, I just want to remind folks in our audience that with each of these petitions, we will first go to our planning staff for background information. We'll have an opportunity for the commissioners to ask any questions of the planning staff that they have. We'll then ask that the petitioners please use the raise hand feature to indicate yourself. And we will ask the petitioner to introduce themselves and give any additional information that they would like. We'll also have an opportunity for anyone else in the audience attending who would like to make any comments for or against petitions to comment during those petitions. So we'll definitely have an opportunity for everyone in our audience to participate. And we'll sort of prompt you along as we go with when those steps are. So with that, if our secretary is ready, let's move into the beginning of our agenda, public hearings, item number one.
Petition 2020 day 07 day 01 day 04 submitted by Adams Park Development LLC pursuant to section 23.01 of the City of Livonia zoning ordinance number 543. As amended, requesting to rezone the properties at 14416 Harrison Avenue and 28201 Linden Avenue, which is the former Adams Elementary School site located on the south side of Linden between Inkster and Middlebelt Roads in the southeast quarter of section 24 from public land to R1 one family residential.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a rezoning petition involving the former Adams Elementary School site. The rezoning would change the classification from PL, public land, to R1, one family residential. This is a 12 and three-quarter acre site that is located on the south side of Linden Street between Inkster and Middlebelt Roads. Immediately to the, well, really to the, to the east and to the west of the property, as you can see from the zoning map, there is R1 zoning. These are developed residential subdivisions, including Buckingham Village, Compton Village and Compton Square Estates. Immediately to the south of the subject property is city-owned property, that is Dooley Park. And then to the north across Linden, our residential homes zoned R2, including the recently completed Bishop Estates Cluster Development. This is an aerial photograph showing what the site looked like when the school was located on the property. The school has since been razed and the site is, is being cleared. This is a concept plan that was submitted with the rezoning application. It shows a total of 39 lots. The R1 zoning would allow for the development of single-family homes on conventional lots that would have a minimum lot width of 60 feet in width by a minimum lot depth of 120 feet and for a total area no less than 7,200 square feet. This design, as you can see, shows a U-shaped road pattern with both streets having access from Linden. Most of the lots would front on the new internal road system that includes a cul-de-sac in the southwest corner of the subdivision. Lots 11 through 39 would have access to the new roads and lots 1 through 10, as you can see, would front directly on Harrison Avenue. The plan includes a stormwater detention basin, which is in the southeast corner of the site, as well as an open space area that is located along the south side of the property adjacent to Dooley Park. And Mr. Chair, if, if I may, I'll read out the correspondence on this item.
Yeah, yes, please.
First is a letter from our engineering division dated August 10th that reads, "In accordance with your request, the engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed rezoning at this time. The parcels are sign the addresses of 28201 Linden Avenue and 14416 Harrison Avenue. The legal description submitted by the owner of the, on the proposed plan appears to be correct and should be used to describe the proposed rezoned property. The proposed development is currently serviced by Public Water Main, Sanitary and Storm Sewers, which will need to be extended to service any new residences. The submitted drawing does not indicate any utility connections, so we do not have any knowledge of impacts to the existing systems at this time. The owner has been in contact with this office regarding the project and is aware of the engineering department requirements. It should be noted that should the project move forward, the proposed construction will be required to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance, including detention requirements. A full review of the proposed development will be completed when plans are submitted for permitting." That letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next letter is dated August 10th and it comes from our Department of Finance indicating that they have no objections to the proposal as there are no outstanding amounts receivable, general water or sewer. That letter signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. We have a similar letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated August 7th indicating that at this time there are no taxes due, therefore no objections to the proposal. And then lastly, we have an email correspondent from a resident who gives their name as Atul Kishore or Kishoree. And it reads as follows, it's dated August 15th. "On behalf of the New Bishop Condominiums Homeowners Association, I would like to share our views on the matter of petition 2027-14, the rezoning of the former Adams Elementary School site. For family residential zoning, the city needs to include the following in their plan approval process. One, the electric and utility wires along the north side of Linden Street should be transitioned from above ground to below ground for safety and reliability. As additional loads will feed off these lines, it is critical that these wires east of Harrison are buried for safety and curb appeal. Two, Linden Road east of Harrison needs to be completely reconstructed to handle the additional traffic load. There is already too much traffic traveling at a higher than posted speeds. Three, Linden Street in front of Bishop Condominiums has a low elevation resulting in constant flooding. Todd Zalinsik, City of Livonia Engineering Department is aware of this issue and looking at short-term and long-term alternatives. Drainage is required for safety and proper maintenance and a solution needs to be addressed as soon as possible. And four, Linden Street is already a high-traffic road and the entrance for the new residential home should be along Harrison to avoid increased risk of accidents in the area. I would like to be kept informed of any developments in this project as it impacts our homes and their surroundings." Again, the person giving their name here is Atul Kishore and that is the extent of the correspondence. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mark. Is there any questions of the planning staff or, or any questions of the Planning Commission for the planning staff at this point? If not, our petitioners are in the audience. If you could please click raise hand, I can recognize you and we can speak with you. I believe we have Stuart Michelson and there we go. And Mr. Michelson, good evening.
Good evening.
If you would like to start with your name and address, you can start with that and then tell us more about your project.
Okay, the, my name is Stuart Michelson. I'm one of the partners at Windmill Homes. We were at 31333 West 13 Mile Road, Farmington Hills. And we have, as you can see, come up with a slight, a site plan that we feel works within the R1 zoning. We've done some very preliminary engineering at this point, just to get the rezoning. And we have the 39 lots. We're looking forward to building 39 homes in the community. We have purchased in other communities, school sites, infill similar to this and been very successful. We did one in the city of Farmington. We've done a couple in Farmington Hills. Did one in West Bloomfield. We find that these infill sites are, are very good for the communities. Many times we find that people are living in the older homes surrounding us and don't want to leave the neighborhood, are very happy to live in that area but want a new house. And so this is something that we provide them.
Great.
If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Michelson. Do you have some other folks with you this evening that are on our call that we can also introduce?
There are other people. I'm not sure if they raised their hand.
Do you know what names I should be looking for?
Stuart Share, Roger Share and George Major.
Okay. All right, great.
All right, this is Stuart Share. Can you hear me?
We do hear you. Good evening.
Oh, great. Good. Thank you. Good evening to you as well. And thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. This is a public hearing for rezoning and, and that's the way we've, we've approached this. This is not a site plan hearing. The current zoning is PL and we're looking to rezone to R1, which is consistent with the master plan. And as you can also see from the, the current photo, aerial photo, most of the acreage surrounding our site is already zoned R1. So we're, we harmonize and we're consistent with much of the neighboring property. We, we're a 12.71 acre site, as Mark Termina had earlier described. And this is also a, a former school site. The, the Adams School Building has been razed, so the land now is completely vacant. By the way, the development company that we formed is called Adams Park Development. Stuart Michelson and, and George Major is partner, are partners with ourselves, Stuart and Roger Share in this, this joint venture. Both companies have a long track record of excellent experience of development within the greater metropolitan Detroit area. And in fact, I think we described that a little bit a week ago during this, the study session. And, and the product for this rezoned property is something that we have successfully constructed in, in many of the communities surrounding Detroit, mostly on the western side of metropolitan Detroit. As I mentioned earlier, it's consistent with the master plan, consistent with the surrounding properties. And we're happy to, to answer any questions that you may have. And I don't know if anyone else from our group is, is interested in saying a few words, but we, we focused on the rezoning aspect of, of tonight's meeting. So we're, we're not fully prepared to, to get into the technical engineering issues, but we certainly have listened to and understood all of the comments that you've made in connection with the site plan that we are currently working with as, as shown on the screen. So I'm, I'm going to let anyone else speak that, that would like to, so that I don't monopolize this conversation. And I would like to thank Mark Teramina for an excellent presentation.
Yes, thank you, Stuart. The, and it is a good point to raise, not only for the tone of this discussion, but also for our audience members as well, that this is a rezoning request that we're looking at tonight. We're simply looking at the request to rezone this from public land to R1 at this point. And is that the appropriate zoning and, and the restrictions that come along with that zoning for this property? The site plan that we see before us on the screen and any discussion around the site plan is purely conceptual at this point. That will come back to us at a later date to be discussed in detail and depth. So really, we're really focused on zoning. There may be some references to the site plan, but, but really it's zoning that we're mostly concerned with tonight. I believe we also have George with us, your partner. I did see him raise his hand and he can unmute himself and introduce himself as well. Good evening.
Good evening. This is George Major. I just wanted to say hello. I'd also like to thank Mark for a very good presentation. And there's really nothing else that I can add at this point. Stuart and Stuart did a great job, I think spoke well on our behalf.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have all three with us here tonight. We appreciate that. And I will ask you gentlemen to just stand by for one second and I'll go to the commission first and see if there's any questions for our petitioners this evening.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Smiley.
Yes, I was wondering, you mentioned a couple subdivisions that are nearby. Do you have any that are modeling this new Adams Park after? That are nearby? Could you give me an address of a subdivision you've built that would be similar to what you're building at Adams Park?
One that we just completed a couple, about two years ago is called Riverwalk of Farmington. It's in the city of Farmington. It's an old school site, the Flanders School, Elementary School. And it is on Flanders, which is between eight and nine. And it runs, Flanders runs east and west. And it's just east of Farmington Road. I don't have a address handy, but there's 33 houses on the property. You can't miss it.
Okay, no problem. I'll be able to find it.
And that, and that backs up to a city park also, so very similar to this. We have another one that we're just completing. We're building in Farmington Hills. It was the old Wooddale School. It was, it's located in the middle of a couple of subdivisions called, God, obviously I can't think of the name of the subs, but they're between, it's between 12 and 13 Mile and between Drake and Farmington Road, right in the middle. And we just are finishing up 18 homes in there. We have people living in there. Those are the two closest.
That's fine. They would look similar. It's going to be, I would assume, ranches and perennial type houses?
Yes, yes, exactly.
They're going to be in about the price, the same price range as what you're expecting to build here?
Yeah, right now because of price increases, especially in lumber, it'll be a little higher priced, but it'll be very similar.
Okay, thank you. And I know we're just talking about zoning, so, but this will give me, should this go through, an idea of what your product looks like. Thank you.
Great question, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioners from the commission?
By the way, Mrs. Smiley, it's the subdivision, I couldn't think of the name, is Colony Park in Farmington Hills.
Colony Park. Okay, great.
Yeah, that's the Wooddale School Site.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any other questions for our petitioners at this time from the commission? If not, I don't see anyone. I will go to the audience and we'll give the audience an opportunity to address this issue as well. And then of course, we can go back to the petitioner and ask any additional questions and follow up on anything that we hear from the audience. We do have Atul Kishore who wrote a letter to us and we put that in the record. We're glad to have them with us tonight. We'll give them an opportunity to speak as well. Good evening.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We do hear you.
Okay, thank you for giving me the chance to talk about this development on behalf of Bishop Condominiums. As you mentioned, those are the new condominiums right across from Linden and right across from this new subdivision. I take personally, I feel it's a good opportunity to use that land. My only concerns are, as I mentioned on the, on the email, the biggest one that probably comes right away is the entrances on Linden. And that with the curvature of Linden, that is bound to have a lot of accidents because people are just flying by on that corner and having two entrances on Linden, which will cause incremental risk assessment. So I would recommend that the, that the entrances to this new sub come off of Harrison. That's probably for this committee at this time of the zoning, that would be my main request. Other than the three that I mentioned about the electric wires, Linden totally needing redone. We have water flooding issues already there that the resolution is moving very slowly with the engineering and I'm willing to escalate that further because we can't even go by this winter without that being resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Kishore. Just for our record, can we get your address so we can?
Yeah, it's 28178 Linden.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
And it's Kishore.
Kishore, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for correcting that.
No problem.
Okay, so we heard from Mr. Kishore. We also have Mrs. Shockling. Let me, for an opportunity to speak. If she can just unmute herself.
Okay, hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Shockling. I am a resident at 27954 Linden. So I am directly across the street from the proposed site, just a little east of the Bishop Estate condos.
Okay.
My concern, some of them echo my neighbor. We have extraordinarily high traffic on the street already, moving at a high rate of speed. And the entrance should be placed on Harrison should this move forward. We also have quite a bit of flooding and additional impervious surface cover is not going to help that issue. Looks like from the site map, there is a plan to deal with that. My, my main concern though is the pollution that will be caused once it's developed, particularly the noise and the air pollution from the diesel trucks. As I'm directly across from it and I'm currently working from home and educating a child from home, we're using, you know, the residents for, for everything at this point. And my employer has actually informed me that I should prepare to be working remotely for up to three years. So I don't want to have, you know, diesel truck emissions, you know, just exposing us all day long. And the neighbors that are around the site to be developed are all of a vulnerable population. We have elderly, we have small developing children and I, myself, an asthmatic. So I am opposed to the rezoning simply because I do not want the site developed for the pollution that it will cause. Also during the development of the Bishop Estate condos, the entirety of that development, I had trash that blew into my yard every single day that I was having to clean up. There was construction equipment that used my lawn, not just the right-of-way, but my lawn proper, because they didn't recognize that it was private property. And we were constantly having to shoo them off the property and they would make promises and leave business cards to come back and repair the lawn. And we just have massive divots and ruts and it's extremely hard to mow it. So I'm opposed for that reason as well, all of the construction equipment that will be on site. I oppose the development of this land because as it was noted, it is public land, which means it's our land and people are currently using it. There is a public land designation further up Linden, but that is more developed. And there's certain activities that people can't, you know, do at both sites. So currently the land is being used by numerous people every day to do activities such as fly kites, run RC cars, hit golf balls. The land is being currently used by the public as public land. And that concludes my comments. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Ms. Shockling. Appreciate your comments and we'll talk to the petitioner about some of those issues that you raised and see what we can do to, to assist with those as we move forward. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? If so, please click raise hand so we can recognize you. We have Mr. McCabe. Let me recognize him. Good evening, Mr. McCabe. You can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay.
We hear you great.
Fine, thank you. I live at 14236 Lyons Street and I'm east of the park, Dooley Park. I've been here about 20 years and I'm not in favor of the rezoning. And it's for many reasons. It's strain on infrastructure, which people have talked about already. You know, the strain on the water, the sewer, the electrical, the cable, police, fire. And then you add the traffic that 39 homes would bring. R1, I guess, although I'm not in favor of the rezoning, it's better than the alternatives, which I think would be attached condos or apartments and things of that nature. So R1 is a lesser of evils, in my opinion. But again, I'd like to have it stay as green space. And I'm not an expert in zoning by any stretch, but there's got to be a better way than just shoving houses everywhere. Doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. The neighborhood is 64 years old. It's been fine without those houses up until now. I'm hoping it can continue. I know the developers have mentioned success in various other endeavors, but success for whom? You know, the developers come in and they build a bunch of houses. You know, there's, there's a windfall of money for the, for the city and they make their money. But here, the residents, we're stuck with, you know, whatever there is. So I'm not in favor of it before, because of that. And I guess my question is, to what gain? You know, I don't see a lot of gain for my personal house with this rezoning. So I'm hoping it doesn't pass. I'm, I'm opposed to it. And I'll be watching the developments. Not the development, let me be clear. I like to see how this rolls out.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments and are making notes of your concerns. And we'll again, try to circle back once we've heard from all the audience members to address any of these concerns that have been raised. So I appreciate your comments tonight, this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have one other person with their hand raised. I don't have a name for them, but I'm going to recognize them. Their entry says B103100. They can unmute themselves and introduce themselves with their name and address, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
We do hear you.
Thank you. Yes, that's my work login. I'm sorry. My name is Belinda Ellison. Good evening and thank you for affording me the time to speak on my behalf. My address is 28154 Linden. I live exactly directly across from the Adams property, which, and right next to what used to be the swim club, the current condominiums. which, um, and right next to what used to be the Swim Club, the, uh, current condominiums right now. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak. A lot of people have raised some very valid issues. I'm kind of on the fence. Um, I know development is good, but sometimes if we get too much development, that can also bring a lot of issues as well. I'm concerned mainly about the traffic. I'm really surprised with the condominiums that were, um, built, which are very nice, by the way. But I'm amazed that just by having six condominiums, how much more traffic has come through, um, on our street. And Linden is like a main residential street, so everybody uses it to access, to get to Angster, to Middlebelt, especially when there's a, um, a lot, a lot of, uh, construction going on. So, um, I am concerned about the entrances getting in and out of the subdivision. Someone mentioned about, uh, the flooding on Linden that would be in front of the condominiums there. As you recall, that used to be the Swim Club. And ever since the condominiums have been built, whenever, if it rains heavily, there's usually a lot of flooding because of that. Uh, so I would see that as an engineering issue, I guess. Um, but anyway, I'm mostly concerned about the traffic. Uh, when Adam's school was still in operation, there used to be a stop sign there for the school and the kids crossing and whatnot. And then they re- decided to remove the stop sign. Even when the stop sign was there, the traffic was, I was amazed at how fast people were going up and down a main residential street. Once they took the, the stop sign out, it's just, I mean, it's a free for all. I, I, people are due at forty with like not even batting an eye. So that is really something I feel should ne- needs to be addressed because we do have little children in the neighborhood and I am concerned for their safety as well. I think that's all I have to say for now. Again, thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Excellent points and, uh, we will, uh, be talking about those additionally here tonight. So thank you for, uh, raising them. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? We do have another, uh, person in the audience, so we'll give them an opportunity to speak. Uh, their name is Lorraine. They can unmute themselves and introduce themselves. Lorraine, we need you to unmute yourself. I don't see Lorraine unmuting herself, uh, so we won't be able to hear her. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? If so, please click raise hand. We have, uh, Mr. Priest, who is welcome to unmute himself and, uh, addresses concerns. Mr. Priest, you can unmute yourself. Seems to be having some difficulty unmuting himself. It's, uh, not doing too well here on these, uh, unmutes here. Uh, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't have anyone else clicking raise hand. I have a request into both Lorraine and to Mike, Mr. Priest, Mike Priest, to unmute themselves if they wish. But they are not unmuting themselves, so, um, we will move on. Is there anyone, uh, else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? If not, is there any comments or questions from the commission? For our petitioners based on the items that we've heard from, uh, Mr. Priest, I believe it's just, uh, started to unmute himself. The mute button, by the way, is, uh, either in the lower right corner or lower left corner if you're on the computer or if you're on a tablet type device, I believe it's, uh, uh, elsewhere on the screen.
Can you hear me now?
We do hear you, Mr. Priest. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm the civil engineer on this project and, uh, he unmuted. I, I was, uh, when I got out of school, which was quite a while ago, I worked for the city of Livonia for about eight years. Back in the seventies and as far as the, the infrastructure is concerned and the drainage, there's, uh, two huge drains adjacent to this property. One of them i- is along Linden. And it's like a twenty-one foot wide by twelve foot high arch. You could drive a truck through that thing. It flows easterly into the Red Run Golf Course. And then along the east property line, there's the Livonia Drain seventeen, which is an eight foot diameter pipe. So as far as, uh, flooding, the only way there would be flooding would be if the, if the grading wasn't properly done because there's plenty of capacity in those pipes. Which should allow for no flooding, even though, uh, you know, there is. And also, we are going to detain the water so that the runoff is equivalent to what it is today in an undeveloped state. And, uh, that will reduce the amount of runoff. There's also adequate sanitary sewer and water manages adjacent to the site too. Well, I don't think there's any engineering problems, uh, with stressing any of the facilities adjacent to the site.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Priest. We really appreciate, uh, your insight and comments, uh, on this item as well. Uh, I don't know if we got your address. Can we get that for our record?
My address?
Yes, yes, please.
Well, I, I live in Livonia and I have for quite a while. I live on Riverside Street. It's down on the turkey farm. But my office is in Canton. It's over on Coppernick, which is a half mile road between, uh, Joy and Warren, just east of Hagerty.
Okay. All right.
I've done, uh, many subdivisions in Livonia over the years.
Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you. We really appreciate your comments, uh, this evening.
Hi, this is Lorraine Camp. Are you able to hear me?
Hi, yes, we can hear you. Good evening.
Um, hi, we're at one four 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 nine Harrison, directly across from the property that is the proposed rezoning. I definitely oppose this. Um, we've been Livonia residents and here in this home for thirty-five years. I guess probably the, one of the biggest reasons as to why I oppose this is, first of all, in the main changes that have gone on through the school systems and everything and, um, having Adams there for so many years, which was a wonderful place for our children to go while they were able to go there, uh, until the school zones were restructured. However, I guess one of the biggest problems that I have with this is that I feel that the school board actually failed us, um, in selling off this property. I think they were not within their, uh, level of, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, level of jurisdiction or whatever, in my opinion, that because this does directly affect our neighborhoods. Um, you know, we had that as a school. We counted on that as school, as park space, as green space, as a couple of the other people commented on. And we feel like that is important to maintain in our neighborhood. I'm not looking forward to having any neighbors there. I haven't had any for thirty-five years and certainly don't want any now. Um, and mainly it is because it's a nice peaceful area and really don't want that all developed. I'm, when you look at the other areas in Livonia that are just house on top of house and to be honest, some of the new areas that I've looked at are not all that impressive. Um, it's gonna be, I'm not sure how that will actually look in affecting our neighborhood. I mean, obviously those homes are gonna look much different than what we currently have now. And what I missed part of the beginning, what are the lot sizes on the proposed development?
Mr. Tormina, what are the, uh, lot size requirements for R1?
Sixty feet by one hundred and twenty feet, very similar to, uh, the lot sizes that exist to the east and west within the, uh, the subdivisions adjacent to this.
And I guess the other concern that I have is initially, and this was way back in the day, there was like a river that actually ran through that property, the part that goes closer down Harrison. Um, we do have a lot of migrating birds and stuff that still come through there and I wonder what will happen to that? If this proposed rezoning occurs, um, and how that will be accounted for.
We can, uh, we can check on that for you as we, uh, get back to our petitioner. So that's a good question. Thank you. And is there any other, uh, comments, uh, that you would like to make on this item?
Uh, no, I think that's it for me for now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We really appreciate your comments and, uh, we are all listening and we're going to, uh, take those into consideration as we move forward with this. And I just want to see if there's anyone else in the audience that, uh, wishes to speak on this item so that we can make sure everyone is heard. Uh, we have Sean Kelly, who has their hand raised.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Don Kelly. I live at one four four five three Lyons. So I will butt up to this development on the east side. Uh, Mr. Priest, a couple of speakers ago said that the drain system should be able to handle any flooding. I can tell you just with the school parking lot, several houses along Lyons on my side of the street had flooding every spring and any, every heavy rain to where our neighbor lost all their trees in their backyard. We lost one big maple and that was just with the school. I'm extremely concerned about what the flooding will be once we have thirty-nine houses built behind us. So, and for that reason and the pollution and the Linden traffic, I am extremely opposed to this development.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kelly. We're gonna talk, uh, with the petitioner about flooding and water management, but, uh, suffice it to say, one, one of the things that usually happens with these types of developments, as you can see, even on the conceptual plan, there's a large retention basin. And the, the county has very, very strict, uh, guidelines as to how water is to be managed on property when it's redeveloped. Uh, this, these are new guidelines that have come in the last, uh, dozen or two years, uh, a couple dozen years. And also how, how quickly that water is, is discharged from the property. So it has to be retained for a certain period of time and discharged at a certain rate to, uh, try to minimize the strain on sewer systems and, and so on. And it's, we'll talk more about that, uh, this evening, but just to give you a little idea that, uh, that there is a consideration that does get put into, uh, water management, uh, when properties are developed, uh, in the last ten to twenty years. So something that wasn't done many, many, many moons ago.
Well, thank you for listening.
Well, you're welcome and thank you for your comments. And we do have some other folks in the audience who wish to speak, so we're gonna give them a chance. Uh, we have Mrs. Franklin, uh, I believe who has her hand up, so we'll unmute her. Or give her a chance to speak. Uh, Ms. Franklin, you can unmute yourself, uh, by clicking mute. Somewhere on your, uh, there you go. I think you're good. We hear you.
Hi, again, my name is Ms. Franklin. I live at two eight zero two nine Linden Street. I am right next to the proposed property. I have two questions. My first question is, if the committee approves for rezoning for R1, in the future, will the developers have an opportunity to request to be rezoned to an R2?
So your question is if it's, if we approve rezoning to R1, can it be, can they come back and add and change it to an R2? Is that your question?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Tormina, do you want to explain, uh, zoning levels work?
Yeah, so the R1 classification, um, establishes minimum lot sizes that are smaller than R2. So if the developer, um, wanted to construct, uh, homes on larger lots, they could do that. Uh, so if they came back with a plan with lots that were larger than the minimum sizes established in the R1 district, they could do that without rezoning to R2. Uh, of course, it's always something they could do. Uh, I don't know what the purpose would be. If, if the R1 zoning is created, there's nothing that prohibits them from building on larger lots without having to go through a rezoning process.
So the, the basic, the basic idea is, uh, this is the minimum sizes that are being set. If, if they choose to build, uh, larger lots, they can do that, but they can't go to smaller lots.
Yeah, yeah, just for your application, the R2 requires minimum lot sizes of seventy feet by one hundred and twenty feet. Uh, so ten feet larger or wider than what the R1 requires.
Okay, hopefully that, uh, makes it clear for you, Ms. Franklin?
Thank you. That answers my first question. Now, my second question is again dealing with sewage. I am the property that has, um, the entryway both to my driveway as well as to the side of my house in which there's access for water and everything that you actually do need in order to connect. Years before, there was a repair that was done in that area. And, um, I haven't received any flooding of that nature. But my question is, there was only a school there with thirty-nine more houses and more usage for sewage and water and things of that nature. Has there been a study done in terms of it's okay to put thirty-nine houses there without stressing the system?
That is a question that will, we can, uh, pass along to the developers and they can talk a little bit about, uh, what infrastructure is in place and what changes, if any, that they would need to make, uh, when we get a chance to go back to the developers and, and speak to them in a few moments. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, is there any other comments or questions that you'd like to pass along to us while, while you have a chance?
Oh, no, just thank you. Those are, those were my two questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Franklin, for your questions. We will try to get those. Well, we got one of them answered and we'll try to get the other one answered for you as well this evening. So thank you for attending this evening. And, uh, you can continue to listen and, uh, we'll go to our next person who wishes to speak, uh, which is Carolyn, uh, oh, we had Carolyn Johnson. There we go. Good evening, uh, Ms. Johnston.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Johnston. I live at one four two two five Lyons and my backyard is directly, um, by Dewey Park. Um, I guess my, my concern, one, I'm not looking forward to having hundreds of new cars driving down my street. A hundred new cars driving down my street. Um, I, I'm not looking forward to not hearing baseball. But that detention pond is the thing that bothers me because behind my house is where a lake forms every time it rains. And my house is not that far from that detention pond. I also think that this Dewey Park is gonna have way too many people in it. Once all of those houses are built. And I, I've been here thirty years. And, um, I, I loved having the, the school there, but the thought of having all those houses and if I'm an R1 and I have small lots, there really isn't anything from preventing the developer from thinking about putting in, attached condos or apartments, which is definitely not what I would like in my neighborhood.
Yeah, those, the attached condos or apartments would not be permitted in this zoning, uh, so you don't have to worry about that happening.
Okay. I, I just don't know, um, where all those people are. I don't know. It just seems like a lot of people, I don't know, I'm gonna look out my backyard and see two-story houses. And I'm not sure how that's gonna affect my property value since I live in a house that is, um, sixty-four years old.
And that's a very valid question and, and we'll talk to the developer about that and, uh, hopefully they'll have some, uh, information about how that affects property values in the neighboring area.
Okay.
So thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your comments. We, we appreciate you attending this evening. So thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your comments. We, we appreciate you attending this evening. And we ask that you continue to uh, listen in and we'll go to the next person who wishes to speak. And I do have uh, Mrs. Franklin is asking to speak again and Mr. Uh, Mr. Priest, I'm going to go to Mr. Priest. He already spoke once, but we're going to give him another uh, chance to speak and then we'll wrap up the comments here. Good evening, Mr. Priest again.
Oh. When we design a subdivision, a subdivision is built, we're required to come up with a drainage pattern for the entire subdivision. All water, rainwater that comes onto the site will be diverted into the pond. And uh, typically when there was a school site there, they really didn't have any requirements for the school to grade their proper, property. And uh, for example, these, all these lots that back up to us on Lyons Avenue, I made the lots deeper on our subdivision so that we could provide a swale running north and south. And we'll put uh, catch spaces in at various points to pick up any water so that none of the water will go into the backyards that are there. The swale will be lower than the grade at the fence. Most of that is a fence. Uh, schools didn't really provide much drainage other than to drain their parking lots and uh, the area immediately around the school. But the requirements are much different for a subdivision. And uh, we will not be causing any drainage to go easterly to the backyards of those people. And that's, that's, that's that in a nutshell.
Well, that's a good point, Mr. Priest, and, and that is something that we've seen over the years that uh, uh, and it, it, it takes a little bit of um, thought to understand this from an engineering perspective, but, but typically when a, when a property is developed, people think that it, it will often cause more water issues when the reality is um, the roofs and, and gutter systems and uh, swales and catch basins and so on actually tend to provide a better water management solution than just open land or certainly a, a large parking lot area where water just sheds right into other people's yards. So those are, those are all good points. Um, thank you for your comments. Again, I'm going to go to uh, Ms. Franklin, who also wants to make an additional comment. We do want to um, get back to our developer and our petitioner and uh, get answers to some of these questions. So we do ask that we try not to have too many repeat questions, but uh, Ms. Franklin, uh, you had some additional information you wanted to provide? Uh, let me uh, let you unmute yourself then.
Okay. Good evening again. Thank you for allowing me to speak one more time.
Of course.
Um, I had an opportunity to go to some of the meetings for the development that is across the street, the new one. And they did ask for the R one first and then after much planning, things had changed that it became an R two. And I noticed that you had said for this development that um, it would stay in R one. Is that something that will actually, when it's approved, be stated that it has to be in R one?
Uh, what, what the petitioner has requested, Ms. Franklin, is R one zoning.
Right.
We do not have to approve that. We can, uh, we can deny this request. We can, we can approve or recommend that it be R two or some other uh, form of zoning. Uh, and mind you, our uh, at the planning commission, our recommendation is simply that. It's a recommendation that then goes on the city council. And city council will ultimately approve uh, or deny the request. Uh, and again, there's opportunities for it to change from R one to R two if that's what the city council wishes to, to do. Uh, your example is actually a very good one of the developments in the north where the petitioner asked for R one, but uh, it was felt that it was not appropriate and R two would be a better zoning uh, for those lot sizes. So uh, so that's what was approved. Uh, so, so that's, no decision's been made at this point yet, but you will be hearing a decision made as far as a recommendation from us, which will then go on to city council this evening.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, and Ms. Shockling also would like to uh, make an additional comment, so I'll, I'll let her do that.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the extra time. I just have a quick question um, for the developer about the bio swale and retention basin. Um, and that would be, is, is it going to be open or is there something that's going to go around the perimeter to, you know, prevent children from going into it since the park's right there? So I was kind of wondering if they could explain a little bit more of what that bio swale is going to look like. Thank you.
Well, that's an excellent question. We will, uh, we will pass that along to, to the petitioner. They may not have all the details of that yet at this point because again, we're talking zoning, but uh, uh, they may have some information about that, so we'll see what they can provide and if, if not, it certainly will, will uh, be part of the site plan. Mr. Tormina?
Yeah, and, and before we have the petitioner comment on this, I just want to caution that uh, you know, this is, this, what, whatever their intentions are is not necessarily the way it's going to be approved, uh, certainly because our engineering department has not had a chance to review this. So if they determine, for example, that a swell is not appropriate at that location, that it needs to be um, a storm sewer uh, or of a different design, uh, then, then we should wait to hear that. We can, he can tell us what his intentions are at this stage conceptually, but in fact, uh, that could very well change. So I just want to make that clear to everybody, including the petitioner.
That's a good point, Mr. Tormina. I appreciate that. So uh, yeah, everything is very conceptual at this point in terms of anything that you see on the screen or the zoning or, excuse me, of the site plan. Uh, we strictly are going to be talking zoning as far as decision making this evening, so uh, I just want to reiterate that. So thank you. I don't see anyone else in our audience wishing to speak on this item, so we're going to go back to uh, uh, well, Mr. McCabe is going to ask for one additional que, uh, comment or question, so we'll give him a chance and then he'll be our last, last one this evening. Then we'll go back to our petitioner. Uh, Mr. McCabe, you can unmute yourself. Good evening.
Yeah, thanks for the extra chance. Um, we, we're talking about zoning tonight, but there are a lot of technical questions that I had. I skipped because we're talking zoning. Will there be another chance to talk the technical aspects? Cause I do have a lot of questions.
Yes, definitely there will be. Uh, what we're going to decide tonight is our recommendation on zoning. That will then go on to city council, uh, where they will, they will make a decision as well. Typically what happens is the city council uh, will, will make a motion and then they basically hold the process until a site plan then is developed. That site plan uh, process then starts back with us again. It'll come to the planning commission and that's really where we're going to noodle out the details of this layout that you see. The retention basin, the appearance of the homes, all those types of things will be discussed in detail and it's certainly will be a chance for uh, all our audience members to participate again in that. Uh, and then when we make a recommendation based on the site plan that we see, that also will then go to city council for approval. So there's going to be uh, basically four shots at this. Uh, two at the planning commission, two at city council. And uh, the first, first set of uh, uh, decisions are for zoning and the second set of decisions are for site plan. I hope that, that makes it perfectly clear.
It does. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your question. Thank you for asking. And with that, I'm going to go back to uh, uh, Mr. Michelson or any of the other uh, petitioners that are with us this evening. And you've heard a number of questions that have been asked uh, in, in comments from the audience regarding uh, traffic in the area, uh, the capacity of the infrastructure, um, and some flooding concerns. And if you'd like to address any of those this evening, you can. Again, we're, we're trying to not get too deep into site plans because that's not what's before us, but uh, uh, obviously we have some folks that live in the area and have some valid concerns and points to make, so we want to make sure that they're uh, included in this process. So is there anything that you would like to add on this? What's been discussed so far?
Let me um, first say that um, I understand all the concerns. We've been doing this, uh, I've been doing this for close to forty years. And we go through this with all the developments that we're proposing either for rezoning or for site plan approval. So I, I, I'm well aware of all the concerns of all the residents surrounding this. Um, just a couple in general comments. One is when we develop a community like Mike Priest was just saying, we actually improve the drainage. So the neighbors that have had problems with, when the school was there, those problems are going to go away because we're going to have underground storm sewers. We're going to have catch basins. We're going to have, um, each house will have a, a, a sump and it'll be outletted into a underground storm sewer, not on the property. Um, so it actually improves any issues that they may have had. And that's something that um, our engineer will work with the city engineer and they'll come up with a great plan. And plus, it, it, it's been mentioned, we, we retain all the water in the detention and then it outlets at a slower pace underground into the uh, storm sewer system. So I can put their mind at ease that it's, it's really going to improve any problems that any of these homeowners have had nearby. The other thing we find is nobody wants to see the land behind them that's vacant, improved. It was that way when their subdivision got developed. People that was next to their subdivision felt the same way. And, but it really works out very well in the long run. And what happens is we put in some nice housing. Um, and the property values surrounding in the surrounding areas actually improve. They go up. So we, we've, we do a lot for the community and, and I know that they're reticent about this, but that's where it has always worked. And it fills in nicely. The um, there's, as far as um, on Linden, well, we have ten lots on that are going to be on Harrison. So there's um, uh, twenty nine that'll be entering on Linden. And it's really not a lot of traffic. I know it's hard to explain, but people go, come and go at different times. People are home during the day, they're working at home now. So you, you don't get the traffic that you think you're going to get. And I know it's hard to convince you of that, but it's really true that you don't get a lot of traffic because you're all, people are coming and going at different times too. So, you know, I, I just feel that um, understanding the concerns of something new coming your way, it's, it's really, if you research it further, you'll see that it's, it's, it actually is a big improvement. Mike Priest can, he's already spoken on the drainage issues, but he can go, you know, he could, he can verify that. That's, he was the city engineer at one time many years ago and he does um, our engineering on this, he's going to do the engineering on this site and it's worked out very well. So I don't know if anybody from our group has anything to add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Michelson. We, we appreciate those additional comments. Are there any questions at this point from any of the commissioners uh, for our petitioners? I don't see any questions for our petitioner. Is there anyone else? Uh, oh, actually I did want to make one, one comment, uh, which is uh, in regard to some of the, the questions from the audience, uh, some of the residents who live in that area who addressed the use of this property and uh, the school's sale of it. I just, just wanted to point out uh, that uh, the city has no uh, had no involvement in the sale of this property or the choice of the school district to sell this property. Yeah, and not use it as a school any longer. That was a choice made by the uh, by the school board. And uh, once that property has been sold to a private uh, party, whoever that party is, uh, they now own that property and they have property rights to use that property as they feel uh, best for them. If they chose to buy it and keep it parkland, they could do that uh, and pay the taxes on it uh, and leave it open. If they chose to develop it uh, for residential use, uh, that's what they, they did in this case and they're certainly doing it to gain profit and to make money. Uh, just like any of the other property uh, throughout the city that's, that's improved and developed uh, over the course of time, including the subdivisions that you live in. So um, that is uh, private property rights in a, in a nutshell. And as much as uh, uh, it would be nice to keep all these open areas open, uh, that was a decision made by the school district and uh, we had no involvement in it. Uh, all we can do at this point is say uh, what type of zoning is appropriate for uh, for this property? Uh, we can't keep it public land because it's not publicly owned anymore. Uh, so it needs to be rezoned, rezoned to something appropriate and uh, what we have before us is requests for R one residential. So that's what we're going to uh, decide on. Uh, so I just wanted to make that point uh, and uh, just help educate anyone in the audience who uh, had asked about uh, the school district's decision to sell the property. So uh, if there's anyone else uh, on the commission with any questions or comments for our petitioner? If not, uh, I will close the public hearing and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mrs. Smiley.
Yes, I'll make a, an approving resolution that the request to rezone the property is at one four four one six Harrison Avenue and two eight two zero one Linden Avenue. Former Adams Elementary School site from P L to R one is hereby approved, subject to the city council approval for the following reasons. That the proposed change of zoning is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding residential uses and zoning districts in the area. That the proposed change of zoning will provide for a single family residential development similar in density to what exists in the neighborhood, neighboring area. That the proposed change of zoning is consistent with the existing character of the area. That the proposed zoning change does not obstruct the goals, policies and objectives of the future land use plan. And that the proposed change of zoning of the subject property represents a reasonable and logical zoning transformation, which adheres to the principles of sound land use planning.
I muted myself. Sorry about that. Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Is there support for that motion?
Port.
Port.
All right, I heard Mrs. McQ first, so we have a motion from Mrs. Smiley uh, supported by Mrs. McQ. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve a rezoning to R one? Hearing no discussion. If the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Ms. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McQ?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Rochelle?
Votes aye and the motion passes. Uh, the recommendation of R one zoning will go on to city council for their, their uh, approval. And then of course, as I mentioned before, uh, we'll be seeing our petitioner back for uh, site plan details at a future date. So anyone in the audience wishing to follow this item, please continue to follow this to city council. You'll also have an opportunity to speak there to the council and all comments that you made this evening will also be included in our detailed minutes that will be passed to city council. So thank you for attending this evening. And thank you uh, to our petitioner, Mr. Michelson and, and your team for attending this evening.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we're all set with this item. So good evening to uh, you folks and we will go on to our all republic hearing this evening. Uh, item number two, Mr. Secretary.
And that is petition two thousand and twenty dash zero seven dash zero two dash zero six submitted by Ed Bison requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section eleven point zero three C four of the city of La Bona zoning ordinance number five four three is amended to operate a limited service restaurant with drive up window facilities, Big B Coffee within La Bona Crossroads Retail Center, one one five zero two Middle Belt Road located in the southeast corner of Middle Belt and both roads in the northwest corner of section thirty six.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Uh, Mr. Tormina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request to operate a limited service restaurant with drive up window facilities. It is at the La Bona Crossword, Crossroads Shopping Center, which is at the southeast corner of Plymouth and Middle Belt. It is at the Livonia Crossroads Shopping Center, which is at the southeast corner of Plymouth and Middle Belt Roads. This shopping center contains roughly 23,000 square feet of leasable space. And as you can see from the zoning map, it is zone C2, a general business. The site is surrounded by commercial properties. The petitioner is seeking your approval to operate a limited service restaurant pursuant to section 1103(c) of the zoning ordinance. This Big B Coffee restaurant would be classified as a limited service restaurant because its interior seating capacity is less than 30. And in this case, it would be 24. The proposed restaurant would occupy a vacant 1,700 square foot space, which is in the northeast corner of the building. This unit faces north towards Plymouth Road. The floor plan submitted with the application shows how the restaurant would be divided up between the dining area, the service counter, kitchen, storage facilities, bathroom and other rooms. There is no outdoor seating proposed with the restaurant. A drive up window is shown along the east side of the building. The traffic lane serving the drive up would loop around the south and east sides of the building. Drive ups are required to have waiting space for at least four cars, not including the vehicle space that is directly at the pickup window. And in this case, the length of the drive behind the building is more than sufficient to meet this requirement. However, the real concern is that not enough clearance exists between the building to include both a drive up traffic lane and a bypass lane, which is required since this area is currently used for a variety of services, including utilities, trash pickup and loading and unloading. I'll note that there's quite a lot of discussion about this at the study meeting and the petitioner is working on making changes to provide enough space so that cars in the drive through and other service vehicles can safely maneuver behind the building. Additionally, the parking lot would be reconfigured to facilitate better traffic flow for both the patrons of the drive up as well as other businesses in the shopping center. At this time, there are no exterior changes proposed for the building other than signage. The restaurant would be allowed one wall sign, no larger than 57 square feet. Plan shows two wall signs, one on the front of the building facing Plymouth and then another in the southwest corner of the shopping center facing Middle Belt. This one is primarily needed to help direct traffic to the drive through. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
I think the first item dated July 20th is from our engineering division and it reads in accordance with your request. The engineering division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time. The existing parcel was assigned the range of addresses from 11500 to 11516 Middle Belt Road and 29223 Plymouth Road, while the overall parcel is assigned the address of 11500 Middle Belt. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Water Main, Sanitary Sewer and Storm Sewer. The information submitted does not show proposed alterations for the utility services. So it does not appear that there will be any impacts to the existing systems. It should be noted that if any work is to be completed in the Plymouth Road or Middle Belt Road rights of way, the owner will be need to obtain permits from MDOT or Wayne County. That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next, we have a letter of no objection coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue. That letter is signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. That's dated July 28. Next, a letter from our Traffic Safety Bureau that reads, I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have the following concerns regarding the layout. The alleyway behind the business on the south side is only wide enough to suit one way traffic. I personally drove through the alley and observed it to be just wide enough to fit only one vehicle going in either direction at a time. The proposition of utilizing a drive through lane along the east side of the building does not seem feasible as there needs to be room for delivery traffic to reach the businesses located in the complex immediately to the east of Big B Coffee. I am also concerned with vehicles exiting from the drive through attempting to make a left turn onto Plymouth, under westbound Plymouth. The driveway is very close to the intersection at Middle Belt, which has a high volume of traffic. I believe there is a safety issue with vehicles trying to turn left from that driveway. I believe these areas need to be addressed and improved to allow the proper operation of the business and the flow of traffic around it. Now, a letter is signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. That letter was dated July 28. Next is a letter that comes from the Inspection Department dated August 25th that reads, pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed and the following is noted. Number one, there are several egress doors that exit out of adjoining suites that will be hindered based on the proposed drive through lane. There does not appear to be enough width to the east side of the building to accommodate the drive through. There are also guest meters located on the east side of the building that would be required to be protected from regular traffic. And number two, a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals would be required for the signage as proposed. This department has no further objections to this petition. That letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next, we have a letter from our Finance Department. That letter is dated July 28th and it reads, Dear Mr. Miller, I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. The following amounts are due to the City of Livonia. Unpaid water and sewer charges, $629.74, $339.29 past due as of May 11th, 2020. Total due to the City of Livonia, $629. Please contact me if you have any further questions. That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Office of the Treasurer. That letter is dated August 4th and signed by Linda Sheal, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And lastly, we have two emails from residents. The first one is from a Jeanette Page dated August 16th, who gives her address as 29148 Elmira Street. And it reads, regarding the petition to add a Big B Coffee at the corner of Middle Belt and Plymouth Roads, I do have a concern. There have been two other Big B Coffees located on Plymouth Road and both went out of business. There was one at Farmington and Plymouth and the other was just, was located just across the street from the proposed location of Middle Belt and Plymouth. If two other coffee shops failed within the same area, why is it necessary to build another one? Also, the original location at Plymouth and Middle Belt did have a drive through. Why can't a location be found with an existing and vacant property to be used? FYI, I didn't find Big B to be that good and will never use it again. I'm wondering if that is the reason the other two closed. Thank you for letting me voice my concerns. And lastly, we have an email from a Megan Ellis dated September 1st that reads, to the Planning Commission, this is my letter discussing why I'm against having a Big B built near my house. I feel if the Big B is built on that corner, it would increase traffic at the corner, leading to not being able to turn off Elmira onto Middle Belt. It's hard enough to be let into Middle, to be let into Middle Belt now. A drive through at the corner would just be a disaster. Also, the intersection of Plymouth and Middle Belt is the most dangerous in the city and does not need more traffic. Many people who do not live in the condos cut through the alley. Traffic around the Big B could lead to more drivers cutting through the alley too fast, putting the kids that live here in danger. Speaking of kids being in danger, there is a bus stop just a block down from the corner. It's visible from where the shop would be. I don't think we need an influx of strangers near the bus stop. People already jump into Middle Belt, making a left from the driveway next to the smoothie place. It's so dangerous and there is no traffic light there. More people will try to drive across Middle Belt from that driveway to the Big B. It will bring more noise into the condos and litter into the street. We already have enough litter blow in from the road. Does Mr. Boyson know that a Big B went out of business across the street where the smoothie place is? If his Big B goes out of business, we will have an abandoned building next to the condos. No one wants that. This concludes my letter. I hope the Planning Commission will consider the items in my letter. Again, that's Megan Ellis, condo resident. And that is the extended correspondence. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions for our planning staff? No questions? We do have our petitioner here this evening, Mr. Boyson and also the property owner, Mr. Hoba is here. Good evening, Mr. Boyson.
Oh, good evening. How is everybody?
Good evening. We're good. Thank you.
So I do have with me a few others. So Mike Huba, who is the property owner, he purchased the property, I believe, earlier this year in January. I do have another person. His name is Bob Perry. He owns a number of Big B Coffee stores, one being in Livonia. And he's also in charge of supporting existing stores and helping new stores start up within Wayne County. And then I have another person, Diane Parker. She is another Big B Coffee owner who is in Flat Rock. And she's also a tenant of another, at another property that Mr. Mike Huba owns. For myself, I own one Big B Coffee location in Livonia. It's along on the corner of Annova Road and Newburgh. Basically, my-
I think I lost voice here.
Oh, hello?
We still hear you. We're good.
Okay. About seven years ago, just to give you a little bit of what Big B Coffee is about. You know, they, they're a Michigan based company. They're focused on quality products through sustainable farming throughout the world, clean label ingredients and of course the people. Myself and my wife, Eileen, you know, our business philosophy that a business purpose in a community is to serve the people around it. And it's not just the products or things to sell. That's really about what we can do to, you know, be an asset to the community, help the people around us, which is why we, you know, chose Big B Coffee seven years ago when we were evaluating different concepts because they put such a focus on the community. A little bit about myself, I grew up in Livonia. I went through the Livonia schools, graduated from Stevenson High School. I still live in Livonia. My address is 9289 Liberty Court. The reason why I chose Livonia to put, you know, the first and now the second is because I believe that, you know, I want to give back to the community through Big B Coffee. To address some of the concerns about the Big B Coffee that was there on Plymouth Road and Middle Belt before. To be honest, I don't know that owner. I know he's no longer in the, in the system owning a franchise. I know that he was not an active participant in his business, which is what with any small business, if the owner checks out, it declines. Obviously, I feel that it's going to be different with me because of how I run a business, how I am with the community. You know, I work with the Boni Public Schools to do fundraising for the kids, for their, you know, their sports teams, events that they have in school, things like that. I'm a part of the Chamber of Commerce. You know, I've worked with Livonia Lions Club to donate food to St. Mary's staff, you know, especially during the beginning of the pandemic. I am a secretary on the Board of Directors for the Community Alliance Credit Union, which is also in Livonia. And I really believe that I am an asset to the city because I want to give back. Now, to be able to do that and to be able to keep my doors open, the need for a drive through is, it's, it's very important. My first location in the other side of Livonia does not have a drive through and it's just hanging up, to be honest. You know, we'll be six years there. We're doing what we can. But a drive through is needed before the pandemic. It's especially needed now. And I think the landscape of the, you know, the food and the retail industry is changing because of what we're going through. And a drive through is more, it's even more important to have. I've asked, you know, Bob Perry to, to, to come here to speak tonight because he does know some, you know, overall figures without giving away any confidential information. You know, how it goes with having a drive through store sales wise and not having a drive through and what we're seeing the differences are. For Diane Parker, you know, she's going to testify to that as well because when she first opened her store, I believe about five years ago, she didn't have a drive through. You know, she was in the middle of a plaza and, you know, like myself, the business was struggling. And so she made the decision to open a drive through. So she worked with the City of Flat Rock to overcome some challenges and she was able to open. So that's one thing that I would like Diane to speak to. And the second is, you know, Livonia is a beautiful city. You know, I think the city does a good job in requiring landscaping and green space and, you know, beautifying a property. And, you know, Plymouth and Middle Belt, the intersection there is one of the highest profile intersections in the city. So we need to make it look nice. So Diane, in that plaza where she's in in Flat Rock, she's experienced how it was before Mr. Huba purchased the property and after, what improvements he's done to the property to make it look nice and attractive and safe for, you know, of course, the customers and the neighboring, you know, residents in the community. So just to go through this plan, I know there was a lot of discussion last week at the study meeting. So we have revised some of our plan as you can see here. So one of the biggest concerns was landscaping around the property. So you can see noted here, there are some more islands that say landscaping. You know, I know Mike is working with his landscaper to see things like mulch, plants, bushes, things like that, that will, you know, be able to resist, you know, they're, I guess they're hardy so that they can, you know, beautify the property. On the south side, the south alley, we've designated that to be a one way traffic because it is about 20 feet and nine inches. So it's enough for one car to go through. Coming around the corner, there was a concern of a blind corner when you make a left turn to the east alley. So we have put in a, we're going to put in a large mirror on the southeast corner to be able to see as you're coming along that alley around the corner to see if there's cars or any obstruction. So as you come around the corner, there is an order station there. The other thing that was caused for concern was the width of the alley on the east side. Currently, it is 21 and a half feet. So what we're going to do is to, the bollards that are present, that are protecting the meters, we're going to move them six inches towards the building because right now they're two and a half feet. So by doing that, it will still give two feet from the building to the bollard, allow room for the meter to protect the meter and open up 22 feet from the edge of the bollard to the other building, which from my understanding is enough for two cars to fit side by side. There is an egress or easement agreement between this property and the one adjacent that allows for traffic to pass back and forth to, for both properties. One of the other things that to note is the dumpster location was turned so that the garbage truck would not have to pass through the adjacent property like it does now. And they're going to build an enclosure, a brick enclosure. And you can see here on the right side of the site plan, the, I guess, the schematic of the gate, the enclosure for the dumpster. So that way it's not an eyesore as you come around the corner. Of course, lighting would be, would be redone in the alley to make it bright and safe. Of course, being mindful of adjacent properties, you know, we don't want any light to spill over into the south or east unnecessarily. So of course shroud to be installed. In terms of exiting the building through the back doors for garbage disposal, we will target to look to dispose of garbage at lower times of the day or another alternative is to store the garbage inside the unit and dispose of it after, after close of business. And we do close by nine o'clock. So, you know, any traffic would be done by then. Otherwise, there are some directional signs throughout the plaza to help cars navigate through the, through the parking lot to find the drive through access around the building. And yeah, I believe that covers most of the things there. So, you know, I'd like the people I had invited to speak on this behalf between Mike, Bob and Diane, if you guys could give your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Boyson. They are, all your invited guests are with us this evening and- Thank you, Mr. Boyson. They are, all, all your invited guests are with us this evening and they are able to speak. Mr. Perry, I believe, is already unmuted. Good evening.
Good evening, and you guys can hear me well, I hope.
We do.
Excellent. So mine is a brief comment, but I think an important one. The reason why a drive-through store or Big B Drive-Thru is critical at this point in time is I did some running of data for August 2020 for Southeast Michigan Drive-Thru Stores compared with non-drive-thru Big B Coffee locations. The drive-through stores had 46% more sales than the non-drive-thru stores. That averages out to about $790 more per day in sales, which in the coffee business is a significant amount of sales. That's, that's, that's do-or-die type numbers for a coffee shop of the size of a Big B Coffee. So that's very important. The drive-through stores are growing their sales at a 37.8% clip on average. The non-drive-thru stores are in negative sales growth, negative 7.5% sales growth. So there is a massive difference, a significant difference between a drive-through location and a non-drive-thru location, particularly given the, the state we find ourselves with the pandemic. And I just thought that those type of numbers would be relevant for a discussion of why it is so critical that, you know, this location be allowed to have a drive-through. I think one of the questions in the last study session was, could it be opened without having the drive-through window? And I think the numbers I just quoted show why we feel passionately that the, the drive-through is absolutely essential for this location, given the state of affairs we find ourselves in. And that's all the comments I have today unless there's questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, for your comments and, and that data that you provided as well. If we don't have any questions for you at this point, we'll let some of the other folks speak and we can always circle back to you. Ms. Parker, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm the owner of the Big B Coffee in Flat Rock, Michigan. And I opened my store in March of 2016 as a non-drive-thru store. I am located in the middle of a plaza similar to what you have there, but mine's more of a, a straight plaza, approximately 25 feet off the road, and we have parking in the back. So that allowed me to do a drive-through that's a little bit different from what yours is. I had, of course, I was, had to meet the challenge of being in the middle of the plaza. And we had initially thought to go around the building like your plan, but I met with some safety concerns. And the City of Flat Rock actually sat with me and I, and Mike Huba, my landlord, and helped us to work around the concerns about safety, to work with my business to allow me to open that drive-through. And I did so in November of 2018. So I've had my drive-through less than a year and a half. And to differentiate Bob Perry's numbers on what a drive-through does for an existing store that gets a drive-through, not one that's been a drive-through for the whole time. My August numbers were 66% increase in gross and a 68.9% increase in net. And that's over last year with a drive-through. I say those numbers not to brag, but to say that they wouldn't have been that high but for COVID. It's a new generation, a new way of doing things. And, and people are looking to minimize whatever amount of contact they can have. My second point is Mike Huba as a landlord. He's an unknown entity to you, and he was an unknown entity to me when I first opened my business. I actually signed with a different landlord and found out I had a new landlord one month later. And I had addressed all my concerns with my, my present landlord when I occupied my space, but I had raised issues about lighting, curb appeal, and the like. And Mike Huba had just bought the building and I was really thrilled to see how, the first thing he did was fix the lighting because that's a security issue. It's a safety issue. When we did the drive-through, we worked with the city on putting deflectors on the lighting because I do not have a wall in the back of mine, my, where my drive-through is. But I have residential homes about 100 feet away, and they were concerned about both noise and lighting. And we worked with the city to tackle every one of those issues. And we've, we've never had any complaints, which is nice. But we've also had many compliments because we did a lot of landscaping in the back, putting up arbivida to hide a dumpster where the garbage is. It, it's not, it's not something everybody wants to see from the backyard. So Mike's landscapers put in our vida. They did a lot of landscaping around where my drive-through was so that the people that were coming up through the drive-through also got a very aesthetically pleasing visit. And approximately two years ago, after he'd owned the building for a couple of years, he also did a major remodel of painting, redesign. It was, it, it brightened up the building and it's now one of the, the premier buildings in Flat Rock. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer anything.
Well, thank you, Ms. Parker, for your comments. If we have any questions for Mrs. Parker, I think we'll probably be asking them shortly, but if there is nothing at the moment, we'll-
That's fine.
We'll let, let you stand by there and you can chime in if you need to.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. I think the only other person on the team is Mr. Hoba, who is also able to speak this evening. So good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you.
Welcome back to our voting meeting tonight.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, good. Yeah. Hello, everyone. I think Ed and Diane and Bob, they did a wonderful job of explaining especially the changes that were of concern. And, you know, like Diane said, you know, we, we look at, we value every property, we value every tenant. And I'm the type of landlord that, and Diane can testify to this, that when you call me at midnight, I'll answer the phone. We're very dedicated to our properties. Our, you know, future, our future, we, we would like to see this property be enhanced. There is a lot of potential here. But one thing we are trying hard for Ed, just like I did for Diane. And one thing about Diane, when she approached me about placing a drive-through on Telview Plaza, I had, I could, I couldn't think of how she wanted to do it. But when we got more involved and she gave me a game plan, we tackled. It's going to work. And, you know, the city worked with us, of course. You know, there was, there was challenges, but we worked them out. Same thing with this. I am seeing Ed's passion for this business. And, you know, I wanna, I want to try to make this work as much as possible for him. And just because I can, I, I know what Diane can do and how she operates her business. It is one of the cleanest businesses in, in our shopping center. You know, other than that, I think Ed pretty much, I think he covered all the concerns. I'm trying to look. And as far as one of the emails from Megan Ellis about it being abandoned, I think we addressed this issue in our prior meeting, which in the plaza next door, the reason that that Big B failed was because of the operator and of the rent being pretty much, I think, almost triple of what we are asking. And also, we bought this shopping center in February of 2020. This unit has been vacant along with the large unit. You know, because of COVID also, we haven't had much activity. And the activity that we did attain, most of the brokers asked us if we have a drive-through. So, you know, I understand this wasn't zoned like this when first built. This was 30, 40, almost 50 years ago, maybe. But the trend has changed. And especially like Diane pointed out that because of COVID, her business is booming pretty much.
Are you still there with us, Mr. Hoba?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. I did have a question for you. The location down in Flat Rock where Ms. Parker is located, is that the Telview Plaza on Telegraph?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I see what you did to place a, a drive-through in the middle of the back of the store. It's, it's a very unique design. I, I've never seen anything like it, but it seems to work quite well. So I'm, I was impressed by that.
Thank you. And, you know, another thing that she pointed out was that we remodeled it. And we didn't just, you know, we, we made it look, we brought it up to modern times. It wasn't something that the tenants were necessarily asking for. We could figure it out a different way to, you know, keep it clean. But, you know, we want to do the same thing to this property eventually. You know, if you, and actually, if you can, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know how to pull it up on Zoom, but if you want to go to our website, TaylorInvestment.com, it's just thingy where there's no S at that. It's just TaylorInvestment.com. And you'll see we have six properties. And we maintain them meticulously.
Sure. Sure. We'll take a look at that site from our browsers. We appreciate your comments. I'm sure we may have some questions for you this evening. So just hang on a moment and we'll see if there's any comments or questions from the commission at this point. Any questions or comments for our petitioners this evening?
Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'm not sure who I'm going to address this to. I think it's probably most appropriately to Mr. Huba, but this particular location is in the Plymouth Road corridor that we've all in the city been concerned with seeing improvements to and seeing new businesses come to. And so having Big B be interested in coming here is, I think, well-received. However, at the study meeting, we talked about a number of things which I don't see or I have not heard addressed here this evening. For example, we talked about removing the meters from the backs of the buildings to, to make that drive-through eastern alley as wide as possible. I know that the drawing shows that it's 25 feet wide between the buildings, but it's actually not. I was there today and measured it. And it's just under 24 feet. Similarly, the dimension on the plan at the southern aisleway is shown as 22 feet. And again, it is not. It's just a bit over 20 feet. And so I, I feel that if there's going to be a drive-through here, and, and, and I certainly agree with all the testimony from Mr. Huba and, and Mr. Boyson and everybody else about the necessity of a drive-through these days. We've got to do everything that we can to make sure that it's, number one, as wide and, and number two, as unobstructed as possible. And number three, as findable as possible. And I don't see any notes on the drawing as to how folks are going to be directed to locate the fact that there is a drive-through here. So, I guess my question's, Mr., I guess, Mr. Huba, and maybe Mr. Boyson, are what happened to the plans to remove the meters? And number two, what, what, what happened, where's, where's the signage to show people where to go, how to find this drive-through? And-
Oh, go.
You know, let's, let's deal with the facts in terms of the dimensions of the driveways here. They are narrow, and we're going to have to address that.
All right. A number of questions have been asked. Mr. Huba or Mr. Boyson, I don't know which one of you wishes to answer these.
So yes, I mean, on, on the plan, it is, it does say 24 feet from building to building. As it is currently with the bollard, there is room for 21 and a half feet. So we're exploring to, to move the bollards six inches towards our building to allow 22 feet. Now, my conversations with Mr. Scott Miller and, you know, with, with Mark Toramina, that 22 feet is enough space to have two cars side by side. That was our understanding. So that's for our plan to move the bollard over to accommodate the, the 22 feet on the east alley. On the south alley, you are correct. It does say on the plan that Mr. Toramina has up, it does say 20 feet, I believe, nine inches. And my understanding as well is 20 feet is the minimum for a one-way traffic, which we designated here. In regards to the navigational signs throughout the parking lot, they are noted right there that Mr. Toramina has drive-through sign directional. So I did submit earlier a picture of what, you know, a sign would look like. Basically, it would say Big B Coffee Drive-Thru with an arrow pointing in, in a, in a certain direction. You know, we can also do arrows, not striped arrows, but, you know, on, on, on the pavement, directing people where to go to the access to drive-through along the south, south alley. I don't know if, Mike, if you wanted to add anything to that?
No, I, I think, I think you've covered most of the concerns at that part. You did, you mentioned there is going to be 11 feet for a bypass lane and 11 feet for the drive-through lane, correct?
Correct. Well, I did say 22 feet total. So it would be 11 feet and 11 feet.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Ventura, does that answer your questions?
Yeah, as far as it goes, the drawing that I'm looking at in our package tonight doesn't have the detail that the one on the screen has. So I didn't see the notations for the signs and the dimensions on the drawing on the screen, again, are different than the ones in the package. So I guess the ones on the screen are a little wider than the ones in the package that we got electronically.
Mr. Ventura, I believe in the last meeting, I'm not sure if anyone mentioned, we are, we, we will repave the alley because it is in poor condition. That was a concern as well.
Thank you. Yes.
That's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Hoba.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. So, so I see how you turned the dumpster and I, and I like that you're addressing that, I guess. And I, I know that Ed said that, you know, you may just hold on to the garbage till the end of the day. But at the study meeting, I believe it was discussed that all of the units in this place would, would use the dumpster- this place would use the dumpster. Is that correct? And are you able to limit all of them going out there during the day?
I believe that can be accomplished. The, the one unit that will be affected directly is the Discreet Plane, which is a computer store or a gaming store. They're very reasonable, and they'll probably, their hours are probably similar to Big B Coffee, though I think they close at nine PM as well. You know, I did get a verbal from them, which they will agree to some sort of, like Ed mentioned, storing the garbage inside until closing time.
Okay. Do we know, I mean, is there, is that a scheduled pickup, or do we have any control over when the, the, when they come to pick, when the garbage company comes to pick the garbage up?
We're still working towards that. I think we can, I think we can have this scheduled. I don't think...
Because obviously, that's a concern, right? I mean, if, you know, they have five cars lined up back there, you're going to have a problem. There are doors currently, rear doors on the units that empty out into this alley right now. Do those get used regularly, or are they just a fire door?
Well, the Discreet Plane, you see two doors there, and one door does not get used. One door, because they took two units when they leased their, their space. So, pretty much that's two spaces than one. By the way, if the dumpster truck drives around the building, you know, if there is drive-through traffic in the alley just before the dumpster, he won't be able to get through there anyway, so he will have to wait for them.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I think all, I shouldn't speak for others, but, I mean, I'd like to figure out how to make this work, but I just have great concerns about, about the tightness and the, of the alley, but, you know, we'll see how it plays out. I appreciate your answers. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Do we have any other questions from the commission for our petitioner? I don't see anyone. Mr. Caremagnow.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I share the concerns of the dumpster. I think the positioning of the enclosure is, from what I see on the screen here, is not, not, not well set up for a garbage truck at any time of the day to get in there. The radius is tight, and then you've got traffic trying to come through there. You're just asking for collisions or potentially injuries, so that's a problem that I see. The second thing would be deliveries. I'm assuming this alley is used for deliveries to the other businesses, and I would assume deliveries to the coffee shop as well. How will that impact the, the activity in this alley?
For myself, I can only speak for what I can do for, for my unit, but, you know, we can instruct our deliveries. We only get it once a week, it's scheduled. We can have them, you know, utilize somewhere, anywhere in the parking lot in, you know, in the front of the building, you know, so that they can, they can wheel their products to the front door, through the front door, and not have to use the back door. I know we use Cisco warehouse, so they're very, you know, they, they work with what we need it to be, so they can give us deliveries and they have safety for their own drivers and their just truckers as well, so we can instruct them to park, maybe in the front park along, along the street, and they can use their dolly or cart to bring in the products through our front door.
Do you have any, do you have any concerns about safety? I know Glenn talked about these doors, these man doors in the back of the building. Do you have any concern about safety, people exiting, entering? It looks like it's, it's a problem waiting to happen to me.
Sure, I understand. And, you know, for us, the only reason why we would need to go in the back door would be to throw garbage, so that's why we're proposing to just store it until there is no traffic back there. There wouldn't be a drive-through line after closing business, so that way we can exit safely and not have issue with a car right in front of us coming through to access the dumpster. And I believe, you know, Mike said that the tenant right below us, Discreet Plains, would be agreeable to something like that as well.
Is, did I hear you in the study session, you have a joint agreement with the building to the east of you? You can utilize that rear parking lot for something?
Yes, and, and also currently, the dumpster gets picked up using, via their property. So, currently, the dumpster is, I think, where it's positioned right now, as shown, but it faces the east property. So, the dump truck simply comes in from using the property next door to us for the east and just picks it up that way. And that was another option, but we didn't feel that was the best option. And what we could do is leave the dumpster where it is and build an enclosure around it the way it is with gates, and then have some sort of crosswalk or, you know, do not block that section.
The, the way the dumpster is now, I was back there today myself, and the way the dumpster is now is a, is a better way to approach it. I will say that there's another problem there, that dumpster is right against your block wall, the back of your building, and without the ballards there to keep it off the wall, you're going to have a problem there eventually. It's going to push right through the back of the, back of the building. So, you really have to look close at that, but in doing that, that's also going to take away space in that alley, which continues to be my concern, is just, hey, I understand eight hundred dollars a day in coffee sales is great, but we're jamming it into an alley here that I don't care for.
All right, thank you, Mr. Caremagnow. Mr. Long, and I also see Mr. Perry would like to make a comment. We'll get to you in a moment, Mr. Perry, Mr. Long.
Thanks, Chairman. One more thing, I guess, for the other Big B owner or franchisers. I mean, I'm not a coffee drinker, so I don't know, but I would assume most of your business is done in the morning. Is that correct? Or do you have, do you have any kind of, can you help me out with that? Is, is most of the drive-through business done early on or by noon, or is it steady through the whole day? Is there a percentage that's done before noon?
Hey, this is Bob Perry. I would guess something like sixty to seventy percent of our sales would be in the morning time.
Okay, and to the landlord, do you know, what time does the other tenant open in the morning?
They open, I believe, the MetPost might open around eight AM. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but the phone store, I think, was at ten AM.
Okay. All right, just things for me to consider. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
To Chair.
Ms. Smiley.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the landlord or with the business, or I have no doubts about anything else except that drive-through. I have seen eleven and eleven, but, I, you know, it's trying to, I just think that's a major problem waiting to happen. And with the dumpster and with the doors, it just, a drive-through is great, it just, that doesn't seem to be the location for one for me.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions or comments from the commission at this time? If not, Mr. Perry, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Yes, there was a question about the, the delivery and how that could be addressed, and Ed spoke about possibly taking it in through the front of the store, but in addition to that, the deliveries can be scheduled to be there very early in the morning, even possibly before open. So, they, sometimes we can get Cisco to come out there very early in the morning to deliver the product, so that that would happen prior to us, or to Ed's store approved to, even before it was even open, deliveries could be scheduled, so that you would not have cars in there while the delivery is happening. Just wanted to make that, sure that was known as a possibility.
That's a good comment, Mr. Perry. We appreciate that. I think the question also applies to some of the other tenants in that building as well, though, which may pose a little bit more of a, a challenge. I'm not sure how their deliveries go, but, Mr. Long, you had an additional comment or question?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I keep doing one more thing. I guess to the, um, I, you know, I'm not sure, again, I'm not a mind reader, but I'm not sure that you have four votes tonight to pass this along. And I do think that we, we kind of like this project, but we just aren't sold yet on the, on the drive-through, so, you know, I mean, I can call, I can put forth a resolution, or I can put forth a tabling resolution, and I was wondering if, what, what the petitioner thought about that, if, if we were to table it and come back, if there were other things that they thought they might be able to, to do to try to get the commission a little more behind the use of this alley.
Well, that's a good question, Mr. Long, and I would like the petitioner to let us know their thoughts at this point, because if, if a tabling motion is offered, it will end discussion immediately, so we want to get a sense of your thoughts as to how this may proceed, or what your thoughts are. If this is tabled, would you be able to continue working on this, this petition and the site plan to address the concerns of the commission, Mr. Boyson?
Yes, I guess, if, I don't know if there's anybody in the audience, if there's anybody else that wants to speak out for or against, so if they have concerns, you know, we can take that into account, and then, I guess, after that, we can make a decision how we want to proceed. Is that possible, or maybe there's nobody? I don't know.
It is, it is certainly possible. We will, we will check with the rest of the audience and make sure that they get an opportunity to speak if there are any, so thank you for, for that. If there's no other questions from the commission, at this point, I will look and see if there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition. If so, please click raise hand in your Zoom application, so we can know that you wish to speak. Ms. Shockling would like to speak, so good evening again, Ms. Shockling, and you're welcome to unmute yourself and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Shockling. Again, I'm a resident at two seven nine five four Linden. As a resident and a consumer, I am in favor of this petition. I have a adult disabled child, and it is extraordinarily difficult to get into any type of business, even when there isn't a pandemic. So, we are currently completely limited in our purchasing choices to businesses that offer drive-up, and, you know, so just for that reason alone, you know, to speak to their business numbers, I am sure that there are a lot of people who utilize the service, but there is a portion of your population in this community that a hundred percent needs things like drive-up in order to just access the service and have a normal kind of sense of, you know, being a part of the community. So, for those reasons, I am in favor of it. Thank you for my time.
Well, thank you, Ms. Shockling. That's a, that's a wonderful point that you made, that not only is drive-up services seen as a convenience for a lot of people, but it's a necessity for many in our community as well, so I appreciate those comments very much. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? I don't see anyone else raising their hand. Mr. Boyson, Mr. Huba, we will give you a chance to make any additional comments that you would like before we make our decision. If there is no other questions or comments from any of the commissioners at this point, we always give the petitioner the last, last word.
Yes. Well, thank you, everyone, for your feedback. Right now, I'm in consideration, especially, you know, Mr. Ventura doesn't have a current set of what we're planning to do. I would, I would request that we table this petition into the next, the next planning commission meeting, so that we have time to address the additional concerns, as well as the members of the commission and the planning department can review these revisions that we've made, so that we can try to work together to address the concerns and hopefully proceed.
Okay, thank you, and I'll go to the commission one last time, see if there's any questions or comments from any of our commissioners, make sure that everyone has a chance to speak. If there's no additional questions or comments, then a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a tabling motion until the meeting of, when do we meet again? September twenty-second, Mark?
Mark, our next study and regular meeting are...
Yeah, that's correct. We'll have a study meeting on the fifteenth. We skip a week because of the Labor Day holiday, and then we meet again on the fifteenth study session only, and then on the twenty-second, we come back for a voting meeting. So, you'll have an opportunity to discuss this in greater detail at the study meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Mr. Long has offered a motion to table to our study meeting of the fifteenth, regular meeting of the twenty-second. Is there a motion, is there a support for that motion?
Support.
We have support by Mrs. McQ, I heard. We have a motion to table by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. McQ. There is no discussion on tabling motions, so we'll go right to our secretary to call the roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. McQ?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Caremagnow votes aye, Chair will shut.
Votes aye, motion passes. The item has been tabled. Thank you for coming this evening and for the discussion. We will continue to work on this, our planning staff with you, and we'll see you at our next study meeting in a couple of weeks, okay?
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time and trying to work together through these. Have a good night.
Thank you. You have a good night as well. We appreciate your work as well. So, if there's nothing else on that item, I believe we are done with the public hearing section of our agenda. We are, and we move on to item number three in Miss Lanes items, Mr. Secretary.
Petition two thousand nineteen dash zero six dash zero two dash zero nine, submitted by Newman Smith Architecture. Requested a one-year extension of all plans in connection with proposal to expand the floor area, renovate the exterior appearance of the building, and modify the vehicular parking layout of the existing Salvation Army resale store at three three six zero zero Plymouth Road, located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Farmington and Stark Roads in the southeast quarter of Section twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Caremagnow. Mr. Tormina?
Just briefly, this is a waiver use petition that we reviewed about a year ago involving the expansion and remodeling of the Salvation Army store. They are requesting a one-year extension of all plans that were approved as part of that waiver use petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina, and we do have Mr. Cummings in the audience with us. He is welcome to unmute himself if he would like to add any additional comments. Again, we'll just ask you to start with your name and address.
Hi, my name's Jim Cummings with Newman Smith Architecture, four hundred Galleria Office Center, Suite five five five, Southfield. I just wanted to give a kind of an update where we were with the project at this time. We awarded PCI contractors in September to work with us to justify the budget and to work with contractors and getting them on board. That took us to November. In November, we realized that we needed to kind of go through a VE process. That took about a couple of months. That got us till the end of the year, so by the beginning of the year, the... So by the beginning of the year, the budget had finally been approved. We were working on our drawings. We were looking to submit probably sometime mid-April to the city for engineering and plan review. COVID hit towards the middle of March, end of March. We were contacted on April 9th by Salvation Army to go on hold for about a month so they can review the project a little bit and, and, and just kind of see what was going to happen with the situation. They came back to us on May 8th and said that they did not approve for the project to go forward. And what they wanted to do is have another six to 10-month hold on the project and see what happened at that point. So going forward, I think, you know, that would put us towards the end of this year, beginning of next year. Hopefully, they would approve us to move forward. We probably have to go through another budget phase and probably work with more, some contractors to kind of justify that again and get it approved again. But I would think probably if we did get to go move, move forward, that would put us towards probably mid-March, mid-April of next year to, to start the project, at least submit the drawings to the city. So that's kind of where we are right now.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Any questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Long.
I'll just real quick, at the study session, I had asked, you know, how, how, just out of curiosity, what's the volume of pickup? It's, you know, the expansion's obviously still necessary. Are they, are they experiencing greater than a normal volume with the COVID or not as much?
Well, the store needed to cut back because they were limited on how many people they could have in the store. They live in their many hours. This has all been kind of state, state mandated. So they had to limit, limit the amount of hours in which they could take donations and then also have people come in. So right now, you know, they're having a hard time trying to get some of the older merchandise out, working through their donations. People are still donating, but it's still because of the COVID and, and because of the restrictions on, on, on spacing and, and all that stuff. They're, they're, they're not as, doing as well, but they are still getting lots of donations and, and they're doing, you know, as best as they could right now.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions for our petitioner? If not anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? Don't see anybody raising their hand. If there is no further questions or comments, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
I'd offer an approving resolution that the request for a one-year extension of all plans in connection with the proposal to expand the floor area, renovate the exterior experience, appearance of the building and modify the vehicular parking layout of the existing Salvation Army resale store at 33600 Plymouth Road is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the request for a one-year extension of waiver use approval by Newman Smith Architecture on behalf of Salvation Army in a letter dated July 28th, 2020 is hereby approved. And number two, that all conditions imposed by council resolution number 269-19 in connection with petition 2019-06-2-09 shall remain in effect to the extent that they are not in conflict with the foregoing condition.
Is there support?
Support.
I have support by Mrs. McQ. This is a motion to approve a one-year extension by Mr. Long and supported by Mrs. McQ. If there's no discussion on the motion, a roll call would be in order.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. McQ?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Care Magna votes aye, Chairman will show.
Votes aye, motion passes, and that'll go to city council with an approving recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Cummings, for attending this evening and we certainly hope to see this project move forward.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you and have a good evening.
You too.
We have one item left on our agenda, Mr. Secretary.
And is the approval of the amendments to the 1,158 Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by the Planning Commission on August 18th, 2020.
I see all members were present for that meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Supported by?
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. McQ again, to approve the minutes. If there is no objection, I will ask that our secretary show six on that approval. I see no objections being levied, so we will note that as being approved. Thank you for that. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Mrs. Smiley is going to take that one. So we have a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mr. Long to adjourn the meeting and supported by Mrs. Smiley. Again, if there's no objection, I'm going to ask if we can show six on the motion to adjourn. I see no objections, so we will note that as being approved. That takes us to the end of our meeting. And I would like to certainly thank Livonia Television staff for their contribution to bringing this meeting to the community this evening. And with no further business to come before the planning commission, I will note that the meeting has been adjourned at 9:16 PM. Good night, Livonia, and stay safe.